The road has been approved as a B double route since the 26th of June 2015. It is also approved for H E M L, high mass limit, PBS level one and level two A, two axle cranes, forty ton SPV or special purpose vehicles, and four to five axle cranes. As a local road, the road manager, Greater Shepparton City Council, is the responsible entity to determine whether the road is fit for a particular vehicle type in accordance with the legislative requirements of the National Heavy Vehicle Law 2014. The road manager notifies the National Heavy Vehicle Regulator and Vic Roads and the route is then gazetted. Council can demonstrate using turning templates that it is physically possible to make the turn, which is also evidenced by the vehicles physically using the route. Vic Roads website presents the statistics on all accidents statewide dating back to 2012. They list, it lists one fatal crash in the vicinity and that involved a westbound car and a truck travelling through to the north. Other records held by council show no fatal crashes at the intersection back to 2005. Council officers and Vic Roads are aware of the particular safety concerns raised regarding the intersection of Ford Road and Grahamville Road and are currently working with Vic Roads to identify and implement changes to improve safety. Question two, what documentation can council produce of investigations into the more acceptable sighting of the route through the Radio Australia which property is currently for sale? The response to that is, long-term strategic planning studies undertaken by council in association with Vic Roads over the previous decade have examined the need for an arterial east-west route in Shepparton North to aid in the realisation of a freight supply chain network around Shepparton and Marripna. These studies concluded that Ford Road is the preferred route to serve as an arterial east-west route connecting the bypass to the Shepparton alternate route. They include the Greater Shepparton 2030 Strategy 2006 and the Freight and Land use Strategy 2013. Thank you for those questions.
Thank you, Peter Harriet. Councillors, we now go to seven point one, Asset Management Policy. There is a recommendation on page twelve. Would a council like to move a motion, please?
I'll move that, the council adopt the updated Asset Management Policy number O three point P O L one, version three point O.
Thank you, Councilwoman Summer. Do I have a second, please? Council O'Sullivan?
That's true.
Councilwoman Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. As we know, council holds a great deal of assets. Fundamentally, that is our principal core business is maintaining assets that benefit the community. We're talking about roads, bridges, drains, street furniture, trees, footpaths, pools, buildings, and a whole lot more. So it does stand to reason that we should have a strong asset management policy. This particular policy incorporates broad principles from state and national bodies and what I like about it is the focus on renewal works that will save council money in the long run by extending the life of these assets and that will reduce pressure on future generations to fund the asset renewals.
Thank you, Councilwoman Summer. Council O'Sullivan, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Would anyone like to speak against the motion? For the motion? We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Oh, sorry. Any closing comments, Councilwoman Summer? Sorry about that. We will now go to the vote. So those in favour? Against? Motion carried. We will now go to item seven point two, Road Discontinuance and Consolidation of Part of Ingle Street, Dukie. There is a recommendation on page five and six. Would a council like to move a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll move the recommendation as a motion as printed on pages five and six of the agenda.
Have a second, please. Thank you, Councilor Givenetti. Councilor Hazeman, would you like to speak to the motion?
This initiating a process whereby we're indicating our intention to sell a parcel of land and inviting public submissions in respect of that and that if those submissions are received, then we'll hold a special meeting and hear those submissions and then ultimately make a decision.
Thank you, Councilor Hazeman. And Councilor Givenetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
I think Councilor Hazeman summed up reasonably well, it's just a tidy up of a number of blocks in, in Dukie that have become available to us and some of them have become available to us and others that were our own property.
Thank you, Councilor Givenetti. Would any council like to speak against the motion? Would any council like to speak for the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, it just, it makes common sense. There's basically three small blocks out there that had been rates paid on for several years. What council's trying to do is absorb those blocks and then be able to sell them as one block that you can actually build a house on. They're currently too small to put a dwelling on any of them. So we'll get some of the rate payers' money back for unpaid rates and then they can be sold on and someone can have a house and clean the whole area up.
Thank you, Councilor Patterson. Would anyone else like to speak to the motion? Any closing comments, Councilor Hazeman?
No, Madam Mayor.
We will now go to the vote. Those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we'll now go to item seven point three, Road Closure and Sale of Part of Camille Street, Dukie. There is a recommendation on page nine. Would a council like to move a motion, please?
I'll move the motion, I'll move the recommendation as printed on page nine as the motion.
Thank you, Councilwoman Summer. Could I have a second, please? Thank you, Council O'Sullivan. Councilwoman Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Quickly, it's pretty similar to the tidy up of the last motion that was passed, except in this case it's going to a private owner after the, an independent valuer decided on a price and that property owner will now be able to consolidate the location and possibly benefit from it because the way it was before wasn't really benefiting anyone and there were no objections to this.
Thank you, Councilwoman Summer. Council O'Sullivan, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Anyone like to speak against the motion? Would any council like to speak for the motion? Any closing comments, Councilwoman Summer? We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we'll now go to item eight point one, Dukie and District Community Plan. There is a recommendation on page twelve. Would a council like to move a motion?
I'll move, Madam Mayor.
O'Sullivan, I think jumped in first here.
Because of the umpire's decision.
Okay. Council O'Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The recommendation contained on page twelve, points one and two. I'd like to move as a recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Councilor Givenetti. Council O'Sullivan, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, the recommendation's self-explanatory. As we all know, community plans are the cornerstone of any small community and Dukie is no exception. The Dukie people are very active in a lot of respects and we've often heard in this chamber from former councillor, from Tatura, saying that it's the jewel in the crown. Well, I can honestly say that Dukie's a jewel in the crown because it has a list of fantastic features going for it and I'd like to congratulate the Dukie people for their community plan.
Councilor Givenetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
I can care with Councilor O'Sullivan. Councilor Adam and I had the opportunity to participate in the community plan, the community consultation phase of it out of Dukie, and I can honestly say that there was quite a considerable amount of interest from a wide range of community members. I think the previous two motions that we have moved actually fit in very nicely with the community plan because one of their recommendations is identify the development constraints for the Dukie township and support future rejoining proposals to increase the supply of residential zone land, which we've just currently done. I think it's great that we're able to move the Dukie community upwards and onwards because I think that, as Councilor O'Sullivan said, they're a great little community out there and they do a lot to look after themselves.
Thank you, Councilor Givenetti. Would, can any council like to speak against the motion? Would any council like to speak for the motion? Any closing comments, Council O'Sullivan? Sorry? Apologise?
Ladies first.
I just wanted to congratulate everyone who was involved in this plan. Dukie's not huge, but it's enormous in terms of heart and the people who live there are so engaged and I know that everyone who was involved in this plan really do care about their municipality. So for us to come forward and say, what do you need, is a real, it's a real bottom-up achievement because they're the ones who are empowered to move forward with what they would like their town to look like. What we've done recently was open a Dukie youth spot and that was a significant investment for the youth of Dukie and one of the actions that have been identified amongst many is a painting or art projection on the old silo there, which I think would be magnificent. So hopefully we can move along with some of these.
Thank you, Councilwoman Summer. Would any council like to speak to the motion? Still being said.
Yes, but she's covered most of it. It was mainly about a few, it's a five-year plan review and there really is a good community out there and basically the one I was identifying was the silos but also the RV friendly and they've got quite a long list here of what they're working on and I congratulate them for it.
Thank you very much, Council Patterson. Council O'Sullivan, any closing comments?
No, thanks, Madam Mayor. It's all been said.
We will now go to the vote. Those in favour? Against? Councillors, we now go to item eight point two, Section eighty-six Special Committees, Committees of Management Membership. There is a recommendation on page eighteen. Would a council like to move a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll move the recommendation as printed on page eighteen of the agenda.
Thank you, Councilor Hazeman. Do I have a second, then? Thank you, Council Sutton. Councilor Hazeman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Very, very briefly, Madam Mayor. Look, the Kyla District Hall Committee of Management is a Section eighty-six committee under the Local Government Act and members can only be appointed or removed by a formal resolution of council. We do acknowledge that Bianca Tacey, who has been a member of this committee, has attended her resignation and so formally the council needs to rescind her, her membership. And at the same time, though, we do really acknowledge the contribution she's made to that committee.
Thank you, Councilor Hazeman. Council Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I would just like to say that Bianca's done a wonderful job and we'd like to thank her for her commitment to this committee over her time there.
Thank you, Council Sutton. Would any council like to speak against the motion? Would any council like to speak for the motion? Any closing com, oh, sorry, do we have, I keep missing your phone, sorry.
Just, I thought perhaps Council Patterson was going to mention about the contribution volunteers make to our society and this is one example of someone who's volunteered their time to help us, to help us progress things that would have otherwise cost a lot of money. So it's really great to see.
Thank you, Councilwoman Summer. Would anyone else like to speak to the motion? Councilor Hazeman, any closing comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we'll now go to item eight point three, Community Planning Action Plan Summary two thousand and seven, sorry, two thousand and seventeen, we get the right year there. There is a recommendation on page twelve, oh, sorry, twenty-two, the wrong number here. Would a council like to move a motion?
Oh, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Patterson. What would you like to move?
The motion, recommendation page twenty-two, and I will read it out, it's going to show it, note the Community Plan Action, uh, Community Plan Action Plans Update two thousand and seventeen, acknowledge the valuable contribution the community plan steering committees and wider community members have made throughout the action plan review process.
Thank you, Council Patterson. Do I have a second, please? Council Givenetti? Council Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, this has been one real success story from council's perspective, I believe, for the community plan steering committees. It gives the actual smaller communities their own voice. It's very hard for a councillor to sit back and, for instance, find out what Dukie want unless there is a representative group from Dukie telling us. We don't rely on the old squeaky wheel from Dukie saying, you need to do this, you need to do that. We like to hear it from a group that represents the rate payers of Dukie and that's what these community steering plans are and they've worked very well. The reviews have been done, they've been going, I think there's about seventeen of them now and that's only a guess, but they've continued to grow and totally support it and it's a great thing.
Thank you, Council Patterson. Council Givenetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, Council Patterson's pretty much covered it all, but I'd just like to say that I've been involved in a couple of the community plan consultation processes in Murchison and Dukie and I think it's fantastic how the local community as a whole get behind this particular concept because it's their opportunity to have input into what happens in their towns and I congratulate all of those people that are involved, you know, the seventeen of committees that we have because without their help and support, a lot of the action that is happening in their towns wouldn't happen because we wouldn't know about it.
Thank you, Council Givenetti. Would any council like to speak against the motion? Would any council like to speak for the motion? Councilwoman Summer?
I would like to congratulate the community department. I know it wouldn't be very easy to facilitate mutually beneficial outcomes across all of these locations, but they are doing it and they're doing it successfully. So any regional council out there who is not doing a community plan action strategy, I'd be very surprised in whether they could actually offer these small towns the attention that they deserve.
Thank you, Councilwoman Summer. Would any council like to speak to the motion? Council Patterson, any closing comments?
Just a quick one, as you look at the agenda and see there's small towns there, but it actually has developed to a neighbourhood plan and that is now working very well and for instance, a group like, let me think, Ford Road could organise their own little community plan and look at things they want done out there, even though we know there's probably a couple of things they do like done. But it is a community, it doesn't have to be a town, it can be a just an area, St George's Road or one that are up and running and they're pushing to get their street developed, which we support, with parking down the middle etcetera to make the little area a better area for them. So it is communities and a few councillors went to Kyla Lakes opening their barbecue the other night. Again, that's not a town, that's a small part of a very large town and they have a committee and they decide what they like done in that area. So that's what council wants to hear about so we can actually support our community in what they want, not what someone's telling them they want, if you can follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Patterson. We will now go to the vote. Those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we'll now go to item eight point four, Draft Community Safety Strategy two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-one, Indorsement and Approval for Public Exhibition. There is a recommendation on page twenty-nine. Would a council like to move a motion? Council O'Sullivan?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation contained on page twenty-nine as the motion, that the council endorsed the draft Community Safety Strategy two eighteen twenty-one for public exhibition from twenty to December this year until fifth of February next year, inviting submissions from the community and key stakeholders.
Thank you, Council O'Sullivan. Do I have a second, please? Council Adam? Council O'Sullivan, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you for the opportunity, Madam Mayor. This cornerstone of this strategy is community safety, safety of the people that live in Greater Shepparton and the question that's raised through the strategy is how can council increase the safety of our community? And as an example, the Safer City Camera Network, which is up and running, which is very, been very successful and continues to be, there's other aspects of the, currently the family violence side of things, where council's throwing its support behind that and the whole purpose of this exercise is to put the strategy out for public exhibition and comment and I invite members of the community to put in their submissions because without their submissions, we can't action any plans or make decisions in relation to it.
Thank you, Council O'Sullivan. Council Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Councilor O'Sullivan has covered it quite well.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would any council like to speak for the motion? Any closing comments, Council O'Sullivan? We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Against? Councillors, we'll now go to item nine point one, November two thousand and seventeen Monthly Financial Report. There's a recommendation on page thirty-four. Would a council like to move a motion?
I'd like to move that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Patterson. Do I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Council O'Sullivan. Council Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Ah, yes, and I'm going to invite our finance director to give us a in brief, sorry, a detailed summary, but a few points that I'd like to highlight. Basically, it's been a, not a difficult year, but it's hard to compare year on year, month on month, with the new concept of, a lot of the rates have come in earlier, so that has been a bit more difficult to monitor. Also, there's been a blowout with our superannuation, which I'll get Chris Tyzel to give us a, a bit of, some details about that. It's to do with having to pay it earlier, so it's thrown our year out. Our year will end up all right, I believe, but just the months are out. And one that all councillors really do concentrate on a lot is the Capital Works Budget. This, we have a budget of forty-one point three nine million and to date we've only used ten point eight five, but this time last year we'd only used eight point one. So we're always slow off the mark with tendering processes etcetera than it really rolls in. So I would now, I'd like to introduce to those of you, Mr Tyzel, who will give us a detailed account.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Patterson. And through the mayor to councillors, just to address that issue around the, the superannuation payment, that was an early, early payment, it wasn't scheduled to happen until a month or so after when we made the payment. They invoiced us early on that one. Combined with that, and you'll see on the second page of the report in your attachments, the employee costs are showing an unfavourable balance and that's due to that superannuation payment and some labour costs that have hit us earlier than expected in terms of casual labour, particularly in the active living area where we've got a lot of outdoor activity in summer and that sort of thing. But you will note in that report that that will correct itself by year-end, so we're not expecting that to be anything more than a timing difference at this stage. Otherwise, the operating performance is running fairly well. Just another point on the Capital Works performance and Councilor Patterson is quite right, we are slightly better than last year, but if you look at that in percentage terms, it's forty-nine percent of our budget is currently committed on the capital programme and that's against the adopted budget at the beginning of this year. If you look at our projected full year budget, it's forty-six point eight two percent. So that's not bad tracking at this stage of the year. We have some large contracts that'll commence next year on roadworks and those sorts of things, that'll kick that along quite nicely. In terms of rates debtors, we are doing better this year in, in receiving our rates income and we're sitting at forty-three million dollars outstanding compared to fifty-one million at the same time last year. A lot of that's due to early intervention of the rates team with people that are struggling with meeting their rates commitments and arranging payment plans and a lot of people have taken the option of getting moving on to the quarterly rate payment programme and that's working quite well. Investments at the moment are currently running at one point eight seven, so almost one point nine percent. We have almost thirty-two million dollars invested in cash at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr Tyzel. Council O'Sullivan, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Would any council like to speak against the motion? Would any council like to speak for the motion? Councilor Patterson, do you have any closing comments?
Look, I'll just make one comment to the people in the room that might be aware of the rationale while we did the rating strategy, while we did. A lot of people were getting to the, a week or so before the final rate payments, they hadn't even thought about paying their rates, they were getting himself into financial difficulty. This way, where there's lots of small payments they can make, it's a lot easier for them and then they don't get themselves into trouble. And this is the first time we've tried it and it appears to be working well, but we won't know till after the financial year.
Thank you, Council Patterson. We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we'll now go to item nine point two, Contracts Awarded Under Delegation and Status of Contracts Advertised and Yet To Be Awarded, November two thousand and seventeen. There is a recommendation on page thirty-six. Would a council like to move a motion? Councilwoman Summer?
I'd like to move that the council note the publicly advertised contracts awarded under delegated authority and tenders that have been advertised but not yet awarded.
Thank you, Councilwoman Summer. Do I have a second, please?
No, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Hazeman? Councilwoman Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'd like to speak to the motion. This section of the agenda pops up every single month and I think it's a great exercise in transparency. Anything over a delegated amount needs to go through council and be ratified as a motion, but all of these come underneath the delegated amount, but we're still listing them publicly. So these are some that have been awarded, some that are in the process of being awarded and I believe it's not a requirement, but it's something that we do. So I wanted to bring attention to solar installation on council buildings, that's the tender that closed recently and that, along with all the solar investments, will position us as leaders in sustainability because it's council buildings, we're being role models here for the public and hoping that other people will follow suit because you just can't keep relying on the grid any longer. And also, I wanted to draw attention to the construction of BMX track lighting and construction of steel fabricated eight metre BMX start hill, which I know that the guys out there have been waiting a long time. They've done a great job whenever they have their competitions, but these two Capital Works will attract national or even international competitors to the region and we all know that that has a massive flow-on effect to our economy and it should further position us as an event city and yeah, yeah, so I'm really happy with that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Summer. Council Hazeman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, every month there's the publication of these contracts that are waiting to be awarded or evaluated and in this particular batch, there's a significant number of items here that will be funded through our Capital Works Programme. We're getting to the sharp pointy end of the year to get these projects completed and so it's good to see a significant number of them coming forward and over time, as they're delivered, they'll then move and become part of the previous item we just discussed, the financial report.
Thank you, Councilor Hazeman. Would any council like to speak against the motion? Would any council like to speak for the motion? Any closing comments, Councilwoman Summer? We will now go to the vote. Those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we now go to item nine point three, Council Representation on Committees. There is a recommendation on pages thirty-nine, forty and forty-one. Would a council like to move a motion?
I'll move.
Council Patterson? What would you like to move?
A motion.
Thank you.
A motion on page thirty-nine, I won't read it all out.
No, it's quite long, thank you. Do I have a second, please? Oh, sorry, he does have, he has three pages, so pages thirty-nine, forty and forty-one.
Oh, sorry, yes, yes.
It's quite long.
I think you should, I think you should read it.
Thank you, Council Patterson. Do I have a second, please?
Can read it out if you like.
Council O'Sullivan, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Council Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Ah, yes, this basically, there's lots of committees around that councillors have to represent it on and this basically splits it up between councillors. For instance, I've been on the aerodrome committee for three years now, there's lots and lots of other committees around which we all share. Every year we go through this process, there's a few new committees this year, which is called the Woodburn Memorial Advisory Committee, which Council Sutton's going on and we all share the load, so to speak, and have an interest on it and we can report back to the other councillors how it's all going. It's worked very well and it certainly does show the councillors and a lot of the rate payers' diversity of the councillor's job. You know, you're out every third or fourth night at one of these committee meetings often and, you know, it's very rewarding, you can have an input into a lot of the things that you're actually interested in and yes, I highly recommend and there's, we've split them all up and everyone's, everyone's got their jobs to go and do for next year.
Thank you, Council Patterson. Council O'Sullivan, would you like to speak to the motion?
I can't top that, Madam Mayor, no, no, thank you.
Any council like to speak against the motion? Would any council like to speak for the motion? Any closing comments, Council Patterson?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
We will now go to the vote. Those in favour? Against? Councillors, we'll now go to item nine point four, Paid Parking in the Central Business District. There is a recommendation on page fifty. Would a council like to move a motion?
I'd like to move a motion, but it's not that one. It's, I'll move option one, that council resolve to provide free but timed parking in the CBD of Shepparton, beginning on the first of March for three months. During this time is recommended a collection of data be undertaken to ascertain the success or not of this trial.
I have a second.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Adam. Council Sutton, would you like to speak to your, your motion?
In free timed parking in the Free timed parking in the CBD is necessary, because CBD of Greater Shepparton is the only area that has paid parking at this stage. Currently, the parking generates about one point one million, and we won't lose all of this money if we have free parking, because there will be still fines, so we'll be still getting some hundreds of thousands of dollars in fines. The Shepparton CBD is in decline, and we've seen valuations of the properties over the past few years decrease, and if we look at the big picture, if we have free timed parking, we should see more shoppers back in the CBD, more people in the CBD will see business confidence grow, and consequently, new businesses setting up. This will in turn increase valuations, and the rate revenue will also increase, so hopefully we could have increases everywhere. We know that Aubrey, Wodonga and Wagga have free timed parking, and these towns are actually doing very well with lots of businesses, both new and old, doing very, very well. How can we expect the CBD to grow with new business and more people coming into the centre if we continue with paid parking? It is the same as inviting someone to dinner, then saying that will cost you a dollar fifty for coming. It is a tax for coming to the CBD. It is interesting to note that the Chamber of Commerce recently held a survey on their social media site regarding the paid parking issue. So far, they have had approximately seven hundred respondents, with approximately ninety per cent against paid parking. I know that most people don't like paying for parking, but this survey shows that hundreds of people don't come to the CBD because of the fact that they have to pay. I also note that parking reserve revenue should only be used for parking-related issues, not used to prop up the budget.
Thank you, councillor Sutton. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Look, I will add something briefly. The interesting part of this motion is the word trial. I mean, this has been a chronic concern in this town for many, many, many years, and I think it's about time that we acted in one way or another, and I think a trial is the best way to actually ascertain some solid data. The actual detail of how we'll ascertain that data is yet to be revealed, and I'm sure that will happen in the next couple of months, so that's my main reason for supporting this. I want this to happen, I want to get some solid data, and then we can move on and either keep free parking, or revert back to where we were, or come up with a different solution. So, that's why I support the motion, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Adam.
I'd like to foreshadow a motion, please, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Summer, that's noted. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion?
The motion is...
Sorry, would you please inform us of your foreshadowed motion, councillor Summer?
It's a rather long sentence, I'll read it out, that the council resolve to continue with the current paid and time-restricted parking regime for the central business district, and continue to pursue further technology options to ensure ease of payment fee, with the exception of implementing free all-day off-street parking at Nixon Maud and Edward Street parking base.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Would any councillor like to speak against councillor Summer's motion?
Councillor Sutton's motion.
Sorry, sorry, councillor Sutton's motion. Councillor like to speak for, sorry, would you like to speak against?
I'll speak against, did you have one Bruce first, was it, or?
No, councillor Summer. Councillor Hazeman, you can go first.
Thank you very much. At the November meeting, I moved a motion in, in three parts, that it be considered again, in, I'm paraphrasing now, but I'm pretty close, that we consider this again an issue of a trial in December. We take into account the circumstances of the multi-deck car park in Care Park, Australia, and also at this meeting, we would consider the performance measures we would use in any particular trial. So, at the outset, I would note that the, the motion is deficient, and it doesn't meet that objective we set in November. There are no performance measures coming forward at this point, which is always going to be an issue. Look, CBD parking's been a vexed and contentious issue, and continued to do so due to the diversity of opinions. In my view, I thought the report provided a sound basis for the recommendation that was put forward, and has been highlighted by councillor Summer in her foreshadowed motion. The research that's been done in other regional centres is informative. The studies conducted in Geelong, Ballarat, Bendigo, many other places, interstate and overseas, and they're easily sourced online, all agree that replacing paid parking with free parking, and this is referred to also in the report, will increase the level of worker parking by between fifteen and twenty per cent. But in reality, in Newcastle in two thousand and twelve, when they actually conducted a trial at the request of local traders, the congestion rate was an increase of thirty per cent, and the traders quickly asked for the metres to be reactivated. All that the research indicates to me is that there is no uniform solution to parking, to traffic, and each location needs to determine its own outcomes, which this council is doing through the development of the movement and place strategy due in the new year. This strategy will refine the parking regime and options, and I'd also add that the suggestion that councillor Summer has foreshadowed is complementary to the thrust of that strategy. Other centres are often cited as models to follow. Aubrey, twelve months ago there, the council reduced the parking in Dean Street, their main stopping ship, strip, from two hours to one hour to encourage turnover. In two thousand and eleven, the council here went the opposite direction in Friar Street, moving from one to two hours to encourage longer stays. Wagga, parking then, if you do a Google search for Wagga and parking, you'll get a range of newspaper commentary. Parking has been contentious between council and traders for many years, and earlier this year, council engaged consultants to do a report on their parking situation. That report recommends the introduction of paid parking in Wagga. In two thousand and sixteen, Wagga, and they use cameras on vehicles to monitor the number plates in the parking bays, how they, they measure it, they raised a million dollars through the issuing of eight and a half thousand fines. Yep, I'll have some more, thanks.
Do you like an extension, councillor Hazeman? All those in favour for an extension? Proceed.
And we would note that the Wagga fine is a hundred and eighteen compared to our seventy-eight, so the equivalent here would be to raise the million dollars that we would forego or part thereof, is in the order of twelve and a half thousand fines per year, or in the trial period, a tick over three thousand fines. Orange is again contentious, with council using cameras to monitor parking, their CBD parking is an hour, very efficient but use a backlash, with Orange issuing more fines than Dubbo or Bathurst combined, cities of similar size. The local paper recently editorialised that paid parking should be considered as they were the fines capital of western New South Wales. I'm not too sure we want to become the fines capital of northern Victoria. Different locations, different problems, different solutions. Unpaid parking will also have a significant effect on council revenue, and that revenue over the years has contributed to many CBD projects, including new car parks in Fraser and Rose Street, new footpaths, removal of overhead power lines, streetscapes, street trees, furniture, et cetera. At a time when there's some serious CBD projects on the drawing board, we feel hardly to forego a dedicated income stream that would help fund these projects. Without that income stream, funding for parking enforcement and projects would fall to all rate payers. The lengthy community and council debate around parking has resulted in a lack of strategic direction to officers, which has exacerbated the problem in part. We have not moved forward with new technologies, providing more payment options, nor have we invested in maintenance. Indecision also adversely impacts the refurbishment proposed for the multi-deck car park, and the movement and place strategy will provide that strategic direction. In my view, the new technology upgrades is a priority for the immediate future, and not some long-drawn-out process conceded at infinitum. Parking reserve funds should be invested as soon as possible, and I have confidence that officers could implement this important change very quickly, if given the direction from council.
Thank you, councillor Hazeman. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Against the motion? Councillor Summer?
We've got a fair bit, we've had a lot of commentary, we've gone over and over this, I'm really pleased it's come to a head at a meeting. I'm just not convinced that a blanket free parking trial is going to be effective at all. There has been discussion on recouping a lot of our losses financially with fines, like, it's like councillor Hazeman was saying, that's seventy-eight dollars per fine, and that could really impact on some of our poorest people if we crack down and there's no leniency. I mean, arguably, fines are less popular than the fees, and the fines are what gets in the paper with people saying that their ticket wasn't displayed. If you do anything wrong, you're likely to get a fine, and that is not going to encourage more people to come to the CBD. I don't think that free parking equals more shoppers, I think free parking will equal more congestion, I think what will equal more shoppers is foot traffic, and that comes into the movement and place strategy that encourages people to park a little bit further if you're an able-bodied person, and just walk into town, and then you might be walking through the shops and see something in a window and go in. That's the sort of leisurely shopper who's going to make a difference in our economy. I do agree with councillor Sutton that a blanket parking tax in the form of fees is not ideal, it's not something that I would like, it's almost as bad as having a petrol tax, because most people have to drive, but I do believe we can be more strategic, we can offer free parking a little bit away from the CBD, we can work on better technology to make ease of parking a lot simpler, and we can follow a strategy that we're likely to adopt, rather than going in the opposite direction. There's been concerns about the risk of litigation under competitive neutrality laws, whether private car park operators are going to come back and say that we're undercutting their business. Now, that has not been tested, but I'm not sure we should be the councillor to do that. And also, like councillor Hazeman said, there's absolutely no measurement here, there's no baseline data on how the economy's ticking over now, and how the retail, how the retail shops are actually going as a baseline. There's a risk of really bad PR. We'll become so unpopular if we deem the trial to be a failure and reinstate paid fee parking. Not only will that be confusing for the public, but I very much doubt if any one of us would get re-elected, not that that should make any difference. So, yeah, look, I really think we should be following our movement and place strategy, it's a good opportunity now to test the movement and place strategy, and see if free off-street all-day parking will move some of those employees out of the CBD, allow more turnover, and be more beneficial for the region.
Thank you so much, councillor, councillor Summer. Would anyone else like to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer, do you have any, sorry, councillor Sutton, do you have any closing comments?
Yes, I do. As Chris said, Wagga and Aubrey and Wodonga have free parking, but they also have very, very good shopping, lots of people in there, lots of people walking around, which we don't have mostly. We can use discretion on fines, we don't have to fine everybody all the time, we can have discretion, so I think that's a no issue, really. It's up to us to decide what, how long they'd get, how many people get fined, and how long we give them lenient minutes after they've expired. And performance measures, I mean, we can decide performance measures before we do the trial, there's three or four months to go, so we don't have to have that done now. We can decide how we're going to do it, and decide all that kind of thing before the trial actually starts, so I don't think that's a problem.
Thank you, councillor Sutton.
Point of clarification, madam mayor, just in relation to the foreshadowed motion by councillor Summer, is there, is there a commencement time for that motion?
Is it actually a minute?
Oh, no, just asking.
Is that clear enough for you, councillor O'Sullivan? Okay, councillors, we'll now go to the vote. For councillor Sutton's motion, those in favour, against, motion lost. Councillor Summer, would you like to please bring your motion forward?
The council resolve to continue with the current paid and time-restricted parking regime for the central business district, and continue to pursue further technology options to ensure ease of payment of fee, with the exception of implementing free all-day off-street parking at Nixon Maud and Edward Street parking bays.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Do I have a councillor that would second? Second, thank you, councillor... Thank you, councillor O'Sullivan. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to your motion?
I will briefly, most of...
Excuse me, madam mayor, the point of clarification, the words to continue to pursue further technology options, is that open-ended, or is there a timeframe on that as well? We could be pursuing those options for the next twenty years.
We were hoping to move fairly fast in that space with the technology, so as soon as possible.
I think the motion should reflect that, but anyway.
As soon as possible.
I'd like to amend the motion, councillor Adam.
Through the mayor.
Can you thank you, councillor Summer?
Yes, most of what I was talking about in regards to strategy was mentioned before. I think retail's gone through some seismic shifts since we did introduce paid parking, so we can't blame all of our retail woes on the metres, but I think potentially we should be looking forward at the next fifty years, and not trying to recreate the shopping climate of fifty years ago, and the younger generation are moving to Melbourne where there's a lot of foot traffic, high-density living, and really good public transport, and we're not retaining the youth as well as we can. What I'm proposing is not insurmountable, there's not an impossible financial impact or any risk of harming small business from the congestion. It is in line with our movement and place strategy, and it will test the fundamental hypothesis that incentivising off-street parks will increase foot traffic and stimulate sales. It also offers a place for CBD employees to park without compromising valuable turnover in the main strip, and to me, it's just a small step towards something more strategic and measured in facilitating a thriving and healthy CBD, it just makes sense.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Councillor O'Sullivan, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. I suppose from my perspective, it's a, it's a high level of frustration, and I took the opportunity to, to read the comments from the Shepparton Chamber of Commerce in relation to their Facebook, and a lot of people took the time to put down their views, and some of the views were fairly blatant. A lot of people were saying they refused to come and shop in the Greater Shepparton CBD because of the cost and the inconvenience, nobody carries coins these days, it's just a total waste of time, ad nauseam. So, in, in regards to that, I think as a global picture, council officers by their very nature are risk averse. They don't support anything which involves risk and which affects the bottom line in terms of the parking issue. We've done to death consultants, it's cost us an absolute fortune, and a consultant will effectively come out with an outcome which is towards the end of safety and steering the middle line. I, for one, been in council now for five, over five years, and councillor Hazelman, sitting opposite, has been in council for a long time, and he would concede that this, to use his terminology, parking is a very vexed, vexed sort of issue, and I'd just like to see something moving forward, try something, because as I've often used, saying that talk is cheap, action is expensive, but worst of all, worst of all, procrastination is endemic. So, if you don't, are not prepared to try something, then we've only got ourselves to blame if we sit on our hands for the next two years.
Thank you, councillor O'Sullivan.
Madam mayor? Clarify councillor Summer's motion before we have further discussion, and it's clarification in relation to off-street components, so it is off-street parking we're talking about, free and timed, corner of Nixon and Maud, and the other one that was mentioned was Edward Street, and that would be the section north of Edward Street. Thank you.
I thought it was untimed.
Sorry, sorry.
Thank you for making that clear. Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Councillor Sutton?
I support this motion, because what we're trying to do is get shoppers back into the mail, we're not trying to find places for, for the staff to park, and I just think this is the wrong way to go about it. You're going to have two all-day car parks right in the middle of the CBD virtually, full of workers, and I don't think that's what we're looking to do. We're looking to bring people to Shepparton, into the CBD to shop, and I don't think this is the way to go.
Thank you, councillor Sutton. Anyone like to speak for the motion? Councillor Patterson?
This has been going on, as we all know, for years and years and years. I personally don't believe, the people I've spoken to, even the ones that say, you know, three dollars for two hours, when you get through their story, it's about the inconvenience of having the change in their pocket half the time. And where council have failed is to keep up with the technology probably over the years, because there's always been something going to happen, and we've got a long way behind there. I believe technology's a secret. I don't think anyone that's coming in to park in front of a shop in the CBD and can't afford three dollars... afford $3, they're not going to spend anything in there anyway. So we want that for people who want to come in and use our prime parking if they're going serious shopping. More than happy for other people to pull up in, you know, five-hour parking bays and go for a walk, whatever. But I believe that's the case for the free parking section. I did something really radical and I had a talk with an expert about it, and we're all experts because we've all been studying it for so long. But there's some people working in this organisation that actually walk around the streets and enforce the parking and check the meters, etc. And I ran into a couple of them one day while having a coffee, and they certainly said the issue with parking in Shepparton is people working in shops and storekeepers taking those parks. You walk down the street, you can see the words out, you can see the people coming out, shift their car. They shift it to the other side of the road. They can't be tackled. All right, so if we were to make it free, that would be even worse. So I believe there's several ways of... several options we need to. We need to do them all. We need to identify more long-term car parking out of the CBD, over the back here, developing that, but sitting there. We need to get that going. We need, as councillor Sutton said, those couple of extra parks, which won't make a big difference, but it's going to make a slight difference. And any parking strategy that's going to improve parking in Shepparton needs a multi-deck car park on-site. If we go free parking, they'll be fighting us all away. We need them on-site because you parked in there the other day, you're driving, get out 100 metres in the middle of the CBD, and that was only $1 an hour, $2 for two hours. So I certainly believe that we have been sitting on our backside long enough. From a councillor's perspective, it would be very easy to say, let's have a paid trial for a year. I think it gets to the stage, well, I believe that wouldn't work, so let's, you know, be strong. Let's make that decision without spending $120,000 on consultants and losing $1 million on failed revenue. Let's make a decision that we need to look at our game on other aspects of parking, and let's go for it, get up and do something.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? For the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll speak for it.
Thank you, councillor Hazelman.
Look, I made a couple of comments, I'm not going to repeat myself, but what's been proposed here is complementary to the movement and place strategy. I think we've got some consistency there. That certainly is going to further refine the parking regime and the options that are available. I think that's very timely, that's coming forward early in the new year. Look, I think the potential of these two car parks becoming free and untimed, again, remains to be seen. If it moves some of the workers' cars out of Maud and Friar Street into those off-street car parks, it certainly provides more opportunity for shoppers in those areas. In answer to the questions around timing, I think that timing could be fairly imminent only with changes of signage. I think I'm reliably informed that at least one of those car parks, the ticket machine, hasn't worked for quite some time. And the reason it hasn't been repaired, and this is understandable from the officer's perspective, is they're waiting for some direction from us. And I think the direction provided by this motion certainly gives the strategic outcome that the officers can work with. Look, councillor O'Savary talked about it being vexed, and it was a word I used earlier. Regardless of the decision, it'll still be a contentious issue. People have... do have a diversity of views, and that's fair enough. Opinions are common, everyone's got one. And around parking, I think the one common attitude, though, is nobody likes paying for parking. And one of the features that I saw in the report that struck a bit of a chord with me is that 50%, I think it was 50% was the figure used, of all parking fines are for failure to display. So that tells me that some people are chanting their arm. Have a look up and down the street, got to pop into a shop for 10 minutes, I won't put anything in the meter because the inspector won't come along. But the other aspect of that, I think, relates to the availability of coins. People simply don't carry coins these days, and it's an inconvenience. And this motion, if we can move quickly to implement new technologies that provide the opportunity for, whether it's mobile phone apps or pay wave-type applications, where the coin issue is taken out of play, provide better options, I think people will be more appreciative of the service.
Thank you, councillor Hazelman. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Jevanetti?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, this is a very emotive issue. Depending on who you talk to, everybody has an explanation as to why the CBD isn't moving better than what it is. Parking is part of the issue, but I think with the recommendation that we improve our technology, allowing for various forms of payment, I think that will certainly improve. I think one of the areas that the CBD suffers from is the variety of shops that are in this day and age. I think that's something that the Marlborough Development could possibly address and assist. I think the loss of revenue on a full 12-month effect of about 1.4 million is significant, and I think it's something that we, as councillors, cannot, in all financial responsibility, agree to. Because we would have to find that money from elsewhere. Where that would be found? Well, there are not many other options apart from increasing rates, which people would not be very appreciative of. So I think the recommendation... sorry, the motion that councillor Sutton has moved to sound, and I think it will benefit ratepayers in the Greater Shepparton City Council, and I think we're about to be hit by a very large storm.
Thank you, councillor Jevanetti. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Or are we cutting a break? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Any closing comments, councillor Sutton?
Actually, I do have closing comments. Just in relation to not wanting large off-street car parks being full of workers. The reason why we chose those parks is because they are underutilised at the moment. They're mostly empty. So what we want to do is fill them up. And like councillor Hazelman mentioned, there is a broken meter in one of those parks, and since the broken meter's been there, it's been a lot more full. So that demonstrates that people will park there and walk if they think they're getting a benefit. So hopefully, this benefit will continue. We don't want them parking in front of shops. If they park in front of shops, then there's no room for customers. We want them parking away from the shops so that people who intend to spend can get in and out.
Thank you, councillor Sutton. We will now go to the vote. Those in favour, against, motion carried.
Madam Mayor, could I ask for a division, please?
Sorry?
Could I call for a division?
Sure.
You need to ask for all those in favour to raise their hands.
All those in favour for a division?
Read out their names.
Okay, so councillor Hazelman, councillor Sutton, councillor Jevanetti, councillor O'Savary, and councillor Patterson, and councillor O'Keefe. Against, councillor Sutton, oh, sorry, I keep the answers mixed up tonight, councillor Sutton and councillor Adam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Motion is carried.
Just a point of order, I think the shade sales over the... that car park was all about doesn't have shade sales.
Adoption of Greater Shepparton Heritage Stage Study, double one C, December 2017. There is a recommendation on page 57. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Patterson, what would you like to move there?
Yes, the recommendation on page 58, if my eyes aren't letting me down, 10.1.
Thank you for that. Do I have a second, please? Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll signal motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hazelman. Councillor Patterson, would you like to...
Thank you.
Go to the motion.
This study's been going on for quite a while. There's been a clear recognition of Shepparton has lost so much of its history, everyone mentions the post office straight away, but there's a lot more than that. And I'm certainly not a history buff or heritage buff, but there is so many places around that really do need protecting from ourselves, if nothing else. And I'll give you a couple of small examples that come to mind. There's a house in Dunkirk Avenue which is called after a famous prime minister in England, and I'll think the Churchill was his actual name. And that was... it's just a house, it doesn't look anything special, it's got the Churchill in front of it. But that was actually built by a lot of builders during the Second World War that couldn't go to the war, but they decided to pool their time of the weekend and build a house for the war effort and salad. Places like that. So it doesn't have to be, you know, some magnificently designed building, but there is certainly a lot of buildings around that really do need protecting. Some are in public hands, some are in private. But it's... this has gone on, it's been a very long process that our staff have been through, identifying, and a committee that's worked on it, identifying the places they believe should be protected. And this will now go out for consultation if it's passed tonight, and people can have a final input.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, there's from time to time, and we've all had experience of one particular house over a period of time where people thought the heritage overlay was an imposition on their rights as property owners. And it's interesting that that property has now recently changed hands, and there's a application for a planning permit before council. But the process that we're adopting here is we're not depriving people of their rights or their entitlements. This is about adopting the Heritage Study, Stage Two C, and then preparing a planning scheme amendment, which is a public submission process. People who are impacted have the opportunity to make submissions, objections if they like, and ultimately that'll end up a panel's Victoria Panel, and ultimately then council will get another chance to make a decision in respect of it. So some people might think it's a convoluted and ongoing process, but I think it's convoluted and ongoing because it provides opportunities at many stages for residents and interested people to make a submission, have their say, be part of the decision-making process.
Thank you, councillor Hazelman. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Councillor Jevanetti?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Firstly, I'd just like to state that I'm all against the heritage studies as to how it applies to public buildings. In fact, I, like many in Shepparton, rue the day that the post office was allowed to be torn down. That was one of the truly heritage properties in Shepparton. I've had a number of ratepayers contact me, rue the heritage study where their privately-owned homes are included. They've stressed to me the difficulties of having the home heritage listed and the restrictions they now face when requiring to renovate their home. As councillor Hazelman mentioned, there are avenues and opportunities for them, but I somehow wonder how successful that they would be within those avenues that they may use to use. I realise that we, as a council, have no right to include privately-owned... sorry, I realise we, as a council, have the right to include privately-owned homes in the study, but morally, I would question that right. If someone wanted a heritage list, my home that I had bought and paid for over a lifetime of work, I also would be very distressed at the thought of someone being able to tell me what I can and can't do with my own home. We have, as councillor Hazelman mentioned, we've seen the fiasco in Corio Street where we heritage-listed a number of homes in the street, and one owner who had a shell of a house, or more precisely, probably about half a dozen sticks of wood, a little timber, a chimney and a few aluminium windows. The angst that caused this family from being included in the heritage overlay was, I imagine, immense. The time, effort and possible loss of money lost in their endeavours to override council's heritage listing decision, and the cost to council in time alone would have been immense. Let's not go down this path again. I believe we must provide owners of private homes an option to opt out of the heritage study if they so desire, which I believe is fair to all. I'm hopeful that other councils feel the same as I and vote against this motion.
Thank you, councillor Jevanetti. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Against the motion, councillor O'Savary?
Thank you for the opportunity, Madam Mayor. First and foremost, let me say that I support the heritage study, and I don't want to pinch your line, councillor Jevanetti, but as far as public buildings, we've all heard the time-honored comment, a man's home is his castle. And I, for one, don't have any faith in the process or the perception of the process that goes on in relation to these things where we have the right of redress, making submissions and things of that nature. I've been a councillor for long enough to realise and seen it in action in terms of what happens in relation to people that are upset about the way that they're dictated to in relation to if they have a dispute, yes, they can go through the process of lodging a dispute, having their say, but the success ratio in relation to changing those things is not very high. So to reiterate, I think that the heritage study is important, and like anything, heritage is in the eye of the beholder. The post office is a well-documented example. But in terms of the heritage study and private ownership, I am less than comfortable in relation to the redress that is available to owners of private property. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor O'Savary. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Any closing...
To the motion.
Sorry, to the motion?
Yep.
Councillor Sutton?
A bit two minds on this one as well. Heritage is always very contentious, as we know. We have heard a lot from the side of people who would prefer that we do not apply heritage overlay on their property, and I do sympathise with councillor Jevanetti's point that we should... that landowners should have some protection. So if only to allow more time to consider, I'm not convinced that right now is appropriate to support this motion. I don't agree with the open-door-out system. I think we'd lose a lot of places of significance just because people believe it's a hindrance. They could be places that are fundamental to the identity of Greater Shepparton, and nobody knows about them, even though the landowner is only really opting out because of what... because of a lack of understanding, I guess. So the way that we've... the work that's been put into this has been phenomenal, and the process we've used has ticked the boxes in terms of legalities, whether we could go back and perhaps look at each objection individually and figure out exactly what our criteria should be in terms of whether a property is listed or not. That's something that I think could be an option. If we do go back and perhaps talk to landowners and perhaps figure out... because I think we've got 56 objections, was that correct? So it's been quite divisive. But, I mean, again, there have been... there have been property owners who actively support their property being protected under the heritage overlay. So it's not all doom and gloom when it comes to these things. So I'm happy to allow more time for consideration if that's what councillors choose. Eventually, though, I do believe that heritage is so important for Greater Shepparton because we've lost so much and that it will eventually need to become a planning scheme amendment.
Thank you, councillor Sutton. Would any other councillor like to speak to the motion? Any closing comments, councillor Patterson?
Yes, I do have, thank you. Basically, I do have sympathy for people that have bought a house 10, 20 years ago, and they want to do something with it, and now they might be able to do exactly what they want. So there is a overlap period there, but I take councillor O'Savary's words of your home is your castle. Well, it is because you own the title of it, but you also have responsibility, as far as I'm concerned, if that's a place of significant heritage like this, one in Dunkirk Avenue, the Churchill, you're also... you should be charged with keeping the integrity of that building intact. That is... that would be a loss for Shepparton in its entirety. You drive down Corio Street and some of those magnificent old houses that, you know, the first houses are built in Shepparton. If this was knocked back, a developer could say, well, you know, that's a big block which they are through there, I'm going to knock one of these down, and there's nothing you can stop. They can put four units, everyone's jumping up and down there, and look what we've lost. This is an opportunity to stop that happening. It's the one opportunity we've got. I do have some sympathy, as I said, for people that have owned, you know, bought a heritage-listed house that wasn't heritage-listed, now is. But I think over... as the years go by, you know, I've heard plenty of stories of people are now identifying heritage-listed houses, they're looking for them, they can develop them with the heritage intact, and that's what people are looking for more than a modern house. They want something that really does reflect their history.
Thank you, councillor Patterson.
I encourage my councillors to vote affirmatively.
Thank you. We will now go to the vote. Those in favour, against... sorry, in favour, did you... Against, sorry, in favour, did he? In favour? Those against? Motion carried.
Can I just have a spill on, because I wasn't actually clear on the voting.
Okay, sorry, could we please go back, those in favour? Yep. Against, motion carried. Councillors will now go to item ten point two, memorandum of understanding between Greater Shepparton City Council and Goldwyn River Valley Tourism. There is a recommendation on page sixty-six. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Jevanetti?
I'd like to move the motion on page sixty-six. It would state to the council, note the proposed memorandum of understanding between the Greater Shepparton City Council and Goldwyn River Valley Tourism, commencing on one July two thousand and eighteen for three years until thirty June two thousand and twenty-one. Endorse entering into the amended memorandum of understanding with Goldwyn River Valley Tourism, commencing on one July two thousand and eighteen for two years until the twentieth of, sorry, thirty June two thousand, twenty twenty, with the option of a one-year extension, and authorise the CEO to sign the memorandum of understanding on behalf of the council for two year period with an option for one-year extension.
Do I have a second? Please. Councillor Adam, councillor Jevanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a briefing from the Goldwyn Valley Tourist, Goldwyn Valley River Valley Tourism Group a week or two back, and I think that there's now been a significant change in the management and governance of that organisation, which gives us a lot more confidence that Greater Shepparton will have a greater exposure through that group into the future. There are clauses within, opt-out clauses, we'll call them, within the contract that if by some chance that one of the other members of the group opt out, then we also have that chance to opt out as well. So I think that there are safeguards in there for us. We are the largest contributing municipality in the group, but as I said earlier, I'm confident that we'll get better coverage out of it now that there is a new management group involved.
Thank you councillor Jevanetti. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I'll just add a few comments. This has been another contentious issue, there's been quite a few of those tonight, Madam Mayor. I think councillors over the past two or three years haven't been convinced that this organisation has delivered what we expect them to do. And as councillor Jevanetti pointed out, we're the largest contributor, financial contributor to this organisation, to the tune of approximately one hundred thousand dollars a year. I suppose maybe against my better judgement earlier on, I have changed my mind and I'm willing to move forward with this, sign this MOU and give the opportunity to the new leadership group, which is, I think Leanne Hulm is the new CEO, is that correct, Mr Harriet? And give them the opportunity, we've had numerous meetings in the past where they've also changed their tack, I suppose, I could use that word, and they're more engaging, and they've promised to be even more engaging into the future. So I think the whole concept is really good, I just don't think it's delivered over the past few years, and we're looking forward to this MOU being the foundation for this to deliver what they promised they could.
Thank you councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? For the motion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'll speak for it. Someone, I think it was councillor O'Savary, made a comment earlier on about officers being risk averse. This MOU would be the epitome of risk averse in that it's certainly putting the council in a more favourable position than we've probably been in the past, and provides us with the flexibility and options into the future that if our expectations aren't being met, that we do have the capacity to move in a different direction, as indeed do the other partners, which that was, that flexibility was missing from the previous arrangements, and as has been mentioned with new governance situation in play, I'm reasonably confident that moving forward, we'll get the outcomes we've been expecting.
Thank you councillor Hazelman. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Patterson?
Yes, this organisation went through an enormous amount of trouble, you best call it, as far as from our council's perspective, and to me it was like a sinking ship. But very fortunately, we've got a new captain on board and a new chief engineer, and they've certainly got it going in the right direction, and I think we should give them time to correct it. And I'm very confident they'll be able to deliver, which unfortunately wasn't happening before. We were financing some very significant initiatives and other showers, I believe, at one stage.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Would anyone else like to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer?
I'll point out that, like councillor Adam pointed out, it is quite a large contribution, and I think it's a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, two hundred and forty-four GST inclusive. So we are the largest contributors, and arguably we've had the least exposure over the lifetime of this organisation. That did, of course, bring up questions of whether we should continue, and arguably also, they're in a, they're going in another direction now, and they've heard us loud and clear that we would like bang for our buck. So if, of course, that's not happening, we could take that over a hundred thousand dollars and go in a different direction, and perhaps our investment attraction team could develop our own tourist alliance that is closer to home. What I like about this is that there's pressure to become state recognised, which should allow for more resourcing and more revenue, and there's pressure to become more financially independent, which will take the pressure off of us. So it'll be interesting to see how we, how we sit moving forward.
Thank you councillor Summer. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Any closing comments councillor Jevanetti?
No, Madam Mayor.
We'll now go to the vote. All in favour? Councillors will now go to item ten point three, awarding of heritage grants two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. There is a recommendation on page seventy. Would a councillor like to move a motion?
Page seventy-one?
Sorry, seventy-one. Councillor like to move the motion?
I'm happy to move that recommendation, Madam Mayor. I have no problem with the cranes. Sorry, I'd like to move the recommendation on page seventy-one as the motion, which is as saved in the agenda.
Thank you councillor Jevanetti. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Adam? Councillor Jevanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Look, this is an opportunity that people who are included in, under the heritage study have, where they can make application to council to upgrade their homes or properties, not always necessarily homes, there are some public buildings there. And I think it's a, it's a good thing that we're able to offer this to people, for those people who wish to be involved in the heritage programme. There are many others that don't.
Thank you councillor Jevanetti for those comments. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you councillor Jevanetti. I'll support this as well, obviously these aren't huge amounts of money, but they're there to assist the owners. I'm just looking at some of these properties, and I know that these aren't, these aren't owner occupied, a lot of these will be rental homes. And in respect to the nineteen Dunkirk Avenue, the one that councillor Patterson was referring to earlier, the Churchill house, well, the only Churchill component of that house is the bust of Winston Churchill on the porch. The rest of the house is just a normal house of that period.
Oh, in order, there is a sign that says Churchill on the front of the house.
Above the bust. Correct.
Thank you councillor Adam. Anyone like?
That's all, I just thought I'd add that little bit of trivia.
Have you finished councillor Adam?
Yes, I have, thank you.
Anyone like to speak against the motion? For the motion? Councillor Hazelman?
Just a very, very simple comment. In light of the previous debate and discussions, it's nice to see councillor Adam and councillor Jevanetti trying to get back in the good books.
I'll go it for it anyway.
Councillor Hazelman? Would anyone like to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer?
I would like to point out that council received thirty-two applications, all of which met the eligibility criteria. There are a few that are flagged for success if any of these don't go ahead for whatever reason, and I'm just thrilled that there are people out there willing to work with us to try and restore some of what we've lost.
Thank you councillor Summer. Would any other councillor like to speak to the motion? Any closing comments councillor Jevanetti?
I'm, Madam Mayor, I think it's all been said.
Thank you councillor Jevanetti. We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Against? Those in favour? Thank you councillor Adam. Against, motion carried. Councillors, we now go to... Table of motions, nil received. Reports from council delegates to other bodies, nil received. Reports from special committees and advisory committees, nil received. Notice of motion, amendment or recessions, nil received. Documents for signing and sealing, nil received. We'll now go to item sixteen point one, councillors' community interaction and briefing programme. There is a recommendation on page seventy-eight. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Patterson?
I'll move the recommendation on page seventy-five and seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, the eyes are failing.
Let's move quick. The recommendation is on page seventy-eight.
Sorry, page seventy-eight, pull it up.
On page seventy-eight?
I put my hand up here.
Yeah, page seventy-eight. Thank you.
Do I have a second, then? Councillor Sutton? Councillor Sutton? Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion? Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, it's just everything that we've had been to and taken part in.
Thank you councillor Sutton. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? For the motion? Councillor Summer?
I think it does deserve a little bit of exposure. I haven't managed to get to a lot of these like I normally would because I've found myself a job, but I do go on weekends and I attend whatever I can. But there's almost sixty different things that we've all taken part in over the month, and I think that's something that people don't realise, it's something that not everybody realises that a councillor does. It's the best way to get in touch with the community, and every time we attend one of these things, someone will say their opinion on what we're doing, or give some kind of feedback that's really valuable in the long term. So I'm glad we're attending so many things, and I think everyone should keep it up.
Thank you councillor Summer. Would anyone like to speak for the motion? Against the motion? Any closing comments councillor Sutton? We'll now go to the vote. All in favour? Against, motion carried.
Councillor Patterson, move that motion? Does the councillor Sutton?
My apologies, we'll have to reverse that, my apologies for that.
I had no closing comments, thank you.
Thank you councillor Patterson. We will now go to the vote. Those in favour? Against, motion carried. Councillors will now go to item seventeen point one, assembly of councillors. The recommendation, there is a recommendation on page eighty-nine. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor O'Savary?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like them as a recommendation contained on page eighty-nine, that the council note the record of assemblies of councillors as the motion.
Do I have a second, please? Thank you councillor Adam. Councillor O'Savary, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, it's self-explanatory thing.
Councillor Adam?
Detail, Madam Mayor.
Anyone like to speak against the motion? For the motion? All in favour? Motion carried.
You didn't want a closing comment.
Item eighteen, do we have any urgent other business not included on the agenda? No urgent other business. I now declare the meeting closed at five to seven.